Cap paint or recap?
It's cap paint, yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to be as exciting as we could have been.
Set the place and get this thing started.
All right, were you ready? Almost.
Almost.
We're all about right.
As I said in the class I recently took, you could start late, but you can't start early.
I haven't checked, but I did. It's the button on Arizona.
Okay.
Have you told that one?
No, I've not.
Sold all his property out there.
All right.
I know we've got a lot of problems.
Call to order the February 13th, 2023 meeting of the Upson County Planning Commission. Can we get roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pitts.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff McKinley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Vice Chair Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
You have Corum out here.
All right, thank you. Item two, adoption of meeting minutes, we will pass on that. No old business, item three. Item four, new business. Everybody got the new proposed meeting schedule in your packets? Do we have any changes or?
I'm making a motion to re-adopting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Item B, election of 2023 officers chair and vice chair. What do you got?
I'm making a motion to reappoint Ms. McKinley as chairperson.
You really don't like me, do you?
Like, I like you a lot.
I see, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Chairman McKinley and also reappoint Member Dawson for the vice chair position. I guess that's an amended motion if the motioner will accept it.
I said, yes.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Is that an abstention or objection?
That's kind of a 50/50.
Four, zero, one.
Yeah, 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 it doesn't matter, whatever, whatever you want to put it down.
Five oh, we'll call it. Thomason five oh.
Item C, discussion of potential new ordinance work. Noise, river property, river corridor, minor subdivisions, and other.
Madam Chair, I asked, I was not authorized to give you the priority list yet from the Board of Commissioners, but this came from their draft priority list.
Okay.
And as soon as I can get you the actual priority list, then I'll do that. You'll remember it had lots of green bars and yellow bars and lots of dots and exactly like that. Well, it's been updated since then, and these, I was told verbally, were the ordinances that were on there to be worked on. I don't know if there's a priority right now for them in a particular order. We've obviously talked about the river property slash river corridor in the past. We really haven't talked about minor subdivisions. I think that if there's some issues you have that, you know, if we're going to open up the subdivision ordinance, that you certainly have reviewed some subdivisions in the past and some issues. I know that some of the Commissioners are concerned about private roads and not too happy about those. Maybe even having some of the subdivisions or maybe all of them go into the Board of Commissioners for final approval rather than the Planning Commission. I mean, I don't know. There's been very little discussion about that compared to these, I mean, the noise ordinance, like I said, we've been talking about updating that for almost as long as I worked here, and it's just never been done. So if you have any feeling, I'm sure that the Board of Commissioners would be amenable if these are their general priorities and not ones in the first. So certainly any discussion you have about, and of any others that you all have in mind that we don't know about the list that you've talked about or you've thought about in the past.
Yes, I have a question about how many river properties are we looking at already? Do you have that information?
No. I mean, in terms of the ordinance, I think the discussions in the past were issues on the flint, but could it be other rivers and creeks? It could be if that's the way it's drafted up.
So basically anything touching?
Potentially. The one thing that I've heard discussed by members of the Board of Commissioners is maybe having allowances for cabins or something smaller than right now. If you're AR, it's a minimum of 1,008 square feet even on the river. And if you're R5, and there's some R5, you're allowed to go as small as 700, but we do, we have in the past, not on a regular basis, but some pushback. I don't want anything even as big as 700. I certainly don't want anything 1,008. And we say sorry, but those are the ordinances that we have, and I'm sure the Board of Commissioners have heard that too. Now, where they go, I don't know.
You know, until they give us a priority, we're chasing after them. You know, because they're going.
Yeah, if I remember.
Is this stuff tabled?
If I remember correctly, excuse me, the last one we looked at was McCann, wasn't it?
Well, that was one of the last ones. I don't know who he last.
Yeah, I think it was one, maybe, maybe one prior, one after that.
Okay. Any update on the ones they already have?
Yes, if we're ready to go to that.
No, I just, I didn't, I didn't know if you.
Yeah, I'll give.
Oh, I see, I see, updating ordinances, okay. So do we want to just sit tight on this until we hear what their recommendations are, what their priorities are, and then?
I don't want, I don't want to get started working on something and then they, you know, that's not priority, let's shift. Let's, let's be productive in the direction that they're going to pay attention to.
Yep. Okay. Number five, other businesses, nothing there. Number six, planning commissioner issues and announcements. Anybody have anything?
I don't.
I have not.
No? Okay. Item seven, secretaries' issues and announcements.
Yes, as you just inquired about the updates on these ordinances. The animal ordinance is basically back in my court. At the last meeting they had, there was a conversation very similar to the one you had on tethering, and they wanted to change your language back to two points. And Adrian was there at the meeting, explained why he didn't think the two points for tethering was a good requirement. And he was very persuasive, apparently, with the Board of Commissioners. So basically, they discussed, they discovered a county that basically doesn't allow tethering at all. So what they asked is that we put that language in next to the language y'all gave them, the single point language, and then they will choose. So they still have a little bit more debate, and since that meeting, I just haven't had time to go grab that, figure out how to put it in there, and then let them entertain.
So that's nothing that we have to do here?
No, it's, it's back on me, and, but that's it. They weren't, weren't really concerned about any other sections other than that one that you spent so much time on, the tethering. And again, Adrian went through his explanation, and they absolutely listened to what he had to say. Like I said, they sort of went to a direction we didn't think about, and that was no tethering allowed at all. So we'll see what they do. There was, I want to see, was it Walton County? I can't remember now, but I have to go.
You say no tethering?
No tethering.
Animals just can't just go?
Oh, no, it'll have to be on a leash or it'll have to be in an enclosure. With the exception, there was one exception, I think, that what they discussed, which if you are physically there, so in other words, they have the dog at the picnic, or you're playing in the backyard, then the dog can be tethered, but other than that.
You have to, somebody has to be there in person.
Has to be there, right. And so, again, they haven't chosen that language. They're still entertaining your language or that other county that they came across that basically is a no tethering except when you're there, sort of thing. RV is temporary housing. They went in a different direction, but that has been adopted. It's final. They decided that basically they're going to have a shortened special exception process that bypasses the Planning Commission. So you will not be involved if it's an RV is temporary housing for construction. Those will go straight to the Board of Commissioners, and y'all won't have them. The main concern that was expressed was that they want to know and be, I guess, have some accountability when these are approved, and they might, you know, if it's administratively approved, they're afraid they wouldn't hear about it, and then if a constituent calls them, they won't know about it. So that was the reason why they decided to go that way.
You said it in the direction of authority.
And that would be all. Well, they create a new process that is a shortened special exception.
I mean, does it not make sense that if an applicant come in to build a house, and they apply for a RV temporary housing, and that, we have determined that is a 12-month allowed permit that you can have with one extension, so it gives you a total of 24 months? And they have stipulations, they have to apply for the permit, have to be approved for the permit, and at that time, they can be approved for temporary housing. Is this correct?
Well, the old process was, you know, basically two to three months, depending on when they submitted, because first it came to the Planning Commission, advertised again Board of Commissioners.
But I think what we had suggested was that it be handled through the staff.
Right.
Correct?
And they, they saw that and didn't like that. So they decided just to?
So if it comes, when it comes to you, then it goes straight to them?
Correct.
They're going to determine whether they're going to allow one or another person to live in a temporary housing, RV temporary housing?
It's the same process, except taking the Planning Commission out of there.
Yeah, I get it, but we had made a recommendation to just allow staff to, I mean, if you have a procedure in place, you have the rules stated, as long as they follow the rules, it's allowable. But now we're going to govern it to the point that we're going to?
That's what he's saying is they don't, they, they feel like if Doug's office approves it, then they're not going to know about it, and a constituent's calling them, asking, hey, what's going on here? Why is this person living in this RV? They don't know about it, where if it comes in front of them, they know about it.
Do they know about every single building permit that comes before you?
No. Okay, whatever they want to do, I mean.
Next.
All right, so that's where it is. That's adopted, done, it just didn't go in the way that it had been forwarded by the.
It's the off of our list of.
It is. And the process is now.
Shortened it by 30 days.
It's half, the process is now half of what it used to be.
Right.
The gateway corridors overlay, that's also back in my court. They looked it over briefly at their workshop, their retreat, and the only thing that we really discussed was two things. They asked me to look again at the language that deals with fencing and to make sure that there's language in there that doesn't allow for what happened at that impound block where they had multiple colors, multiple heights. And I did point out, you do have some language in there, maintenance, basically, language, but they might want a little more detail. I haven't developed that language yet. And then they had also discussed, and I don't know how we missed this, but we didn't discuss metal buildings, yes, or metal buildings, no. You know, we had a list of approved materials in the corridor, and we had a list of not approved or prohibited, and we didn't mention metal in either one of those. So I'm going to provide them some draft language, basically, sort of has a hybrid where, and this is not uncommon in these corridors, where you're allowed, the front of the building has to be brick or stone or something, and then the other three sides can be metal. And we'll see if that's, they didn't really give me a direction, but we did discuss it a little bit, and I said, well, that's, rather than just banning all four sides, and all four sides may not be metal in the corridor, let's look at the facade at least has to be something other than metal, and then we'll see where they go. So those are two tweaks that I've got to make in the gateway corridor overlay language. And then finally, tiny homes. Basically, they've decided not to do anything with that ordinance, though they did ask that one of the focus groups discuss it. So, and of course, we're about to talk about the comp plan, but we have another focus group coming up on Friday, which is builders, realtors, and surveyors. And one of the things that the consultant's been asked to introduce is something to ask about is tiny homes of that group, to see what their input is. While they basically put your draft ordinance off to the side, they did ask that, let's see what we say through the comp plan, and maybe down the road, they do something else. So I don't see any time soon any action on the tiny home ordinance.
Have we gotten any in the last couple of months?
Inquiries?
Yeah.
That was one thing we all discussed at the retreat, was that the inquiries seem to have simmered down, for whatever reason. We don't get as many. I think I did, maybe in the last six months, have one inquiry myself.
I think COVID was driving that. People trying, you know, trying to get out, get away, find them. At least it seems to kind of move, have moved with, with that.
Well, and, you know, I think the bigger question as the county planner, you want that as an option in your community. I mean, whether it's a huge interest or a small one, you just want that as an interest. And as you already know, you can do that in a restrictive manner, or you can let it wide open. That's something between the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners. I mean, for instance, right now, multifamily, it's pretty restrictive because there's no property zone for multifamily. So you, you've seen that in the city, there's not a lot of property, and there's really none in unincorporated counties. So if somebody wants that form of housing, they're going to have to rezone property. Now, we do have a zoning district for that, unlike tiny homes. But, you know, nobody really asks in the county, and the one time we've had that inquiry, never quite made it all the way to the Board of Commissioners.
I have a question about the temporary housing, Mr. Doug. What, how would that be affected, or how would that affect a pole barn that's divided in halfway with a provision for a temporary housing, and then we enclose the other half? Tell me about that, if you would please.
Well, it depends on the zoning. In the AR zoning, you're allowed to have an accessory structure without a primary structure, but we have to be told that, and the ordinance says clearly that that structure has to either be for storage of equipment or for the animals that are in your A part of the AR. In the other zoning districts, you can have a pole barn, but it's got to be after the primary house, the primary structure. As a matter of fact, in the last year or two, we strengthened that language about what a secondary or accessory use is, to make it very clear. Without a primary structure, you don't get an accessory structure except in AR. And obviously, if you've got a farm or a bunch of cattle, you want your barn out in the middle there without whether there's a house or not.
But if you were closing in part of that barn to make it as a temporary housing while you built a house?
Well, then you'd have to basically pull a permit as a house, and it's got to meet, you know, requirements, minimum 1,008 square feet. I'm not sure how many pole barns are 1,008 square feet.
Well, I was just thinking, like, from a, if you make it like an apartment-type thing for temporary housing, could you do that in part of it?
Depends on what the apartment looks like. That is definitely on the line. You'd have to look at that again. Remember, that's supposed to be an accessory structure for equipment and for, so unless it was an actual house itself, not a temporary apartment, we probably would say, should say no to that. But if you want to build your house first, then we'll see what you change that pole barn into and out. You know, there's a belief out there that pole barns aren't enclosed. In our department, yes, a pole barn can be enclosed and still be a pole barn.
Yeah, so essentially, what you've said to me is that that will not work?
No, if, well, we have it, and we just want an apartment.
Okay.
No, because it's supposed to be for the storage of equipment and the storage of the animals.
Okay. So if you used half of it for the storage of equipment, and the other half is enclosed for temporary housing, while you build a house on that same lot, you're saying that will not work? Is that what you're saying?
Generally speaking, what we get is somebody wants like a sink and maybe a shower because they're going to be dirty with the work now. Do they take it beyond that? Maybe. There's only so much we can regulate.
Yeah.
You can build a fancy tech room in there, you know?
Yeah, I understand that, but, yeah, but what I, you know, my concern is that RV that's parked out under half of that pole barn, and then the guy goes into the other side of that and does a complete wiring job for living core.
We tell them what the rules are and what they do after that, and what they can and can't get away with just depends.
Okay. All right. Item B, update on comprehensive plan progress.
All right. Y'all, I don't know if any of you have seen this presentation. This was sort of the kickoff presentation prepared by our consultant, WSP. So just as a refresher course of comp plans, it's a guide, it's sort of if you had a set of beliefs and directions that you want, that's what this is, a vision statement. Hopefully, it brings anything, the coordinating, whether it's a rec plan or a downtown plan, this would be the comprehensive plan that would bring all those other efforts together. And the bottom line is, we have to do it because the state of Georgia requires it to be done. Now, but, and I don't think too many people are confused by this, but it's not a regulation. It doesn't make zoning this way or that way. It's, again, that basis, it's that platform for ordinances that you might want to do. While it doesn't create the new regulations or change zoning, it is the basis for any of that. And I think you're going to see, certainly the intent of the Board of Commissioners, that language in there that would be a springboard for new ordinances. And please, if y'all have the same thought, let's, through the process, let's go ahead and express that and get that in there. There are certain components that are required by state law. There's sort of a recipe book that we have to follow. So you have the needs and opportunities section, goals and strategies, a future development guide, and ultimately, there's a five-year implementation plan. Basically, strategies to do what you said was a good idea. And again, this sort of brings everything together, prioritizes your needs and opportunities. You establish, hopefully communally, a vision and a direction for growth, because you all came and discussed it. Obviously, there are going to be disagreements, but let's get at least to the core values. And we discuss this occasionally about development patterns. You know, we have 36, 74, 19, 80 on the south side. Do we want to just strip those out commercially like we see everywhere else? Or wait a minute, we're not there yet, we haven't ruined our quarters, what development pattern along those? We discuss that on a regular basis, especially when some of these commercial rezonings come up on those corridors. We're required every year, every five years to do these updates. The last one was done by a very small steering committee. They had five or six meetings, and we're trying to be a little more inclusive and get some more public notice out there. And this is a joint plan, just like the last one, where it's all three of the governments, the two municipalities, and ourselves, and our deadline is approval by the end of June. Now, this isn't done in isolation, especially, you will hear a lot of folks because they were so involved in heart and soul. If other studies were done, these have been, copies of these were all given to the consultants. So if there's other stuff to build on or policy statements that have been developed in specific areas, the consultant has copies of all of those. This is the process mentally that you're going to go through and the sort of thing that you will talk about in these focus groups. Where are we? Where are we, where are we going? Where do we want to go? How do we get there? Do we expect good things? Are we expecting, no, maybe not such good things? How do we change that? There is a SWOT analysis done through the consultants. Of course, they review data. If we can get you to one of the last two focus groups, you'll hear them discuss some of the census data from the last 2020 census, and some of the directions that that indicates that the community has gone, at least from a census perspective. We're going to touch on these particular topic areas, and if there's areas of special attention that the Board of Commissioners ultimately, or you all want to talk about, for instance, you just heard, hey, let's see what we want to do with tiny homes. Maybe that would be a policy statement or two that would make it into the comp plan, but other than, if it wasn't for the fact you drafted an ordinance and there's been talk in the past, maybe we wouldn't even bring that up, but now we have direction, yeah, let's see what we might want to say in the comp plan about tiny homes. The kickoff meeting was back in October, so this is not just getting started. We've been doing this for a little while. There was a community survey. You remember where I wore that T-shirt for a couple of months, every day into all your meetings? That was to support. We ended up with over 600 responses. Now, that was not a scientific survey. Anybody could go in, but I think if you looked in the, like, at the focus group, they showed the results, it was a fairly well, good indication across the board, although it was skewed a little to higher-income people. There were a number of questions indicate who was responding, and it was skewed that way. So while there might have been closer to a bell curve on ages, obviously, we didn't have a lot of older folks, and we didn't have a lot of younger folks. It was sort of clustered to those of us in the middle. It was 600 responses, so that's better than nothing at all. The focus groups is where we are right now. The city had their focus group first last year. We've already had our agriculture focus group. And I'm going to say, although it wasn't officially a focus group, at the retreat, there was a lengthy discussion with the Board of Commissioners. So I would say that the Board of Commissioners has had a focus group where they talked about the broad issues, what they thought the community need to look, what the direction is, what we do want it to be, what we don't want it to be. This Friday, we have what we'll call the real estate development focus group, about a dozen folks, I think. We've got realtors, developers, and surveyors. And that'll be Friday. And again, the consultant will be here and go through the same format of the questions. After that, we've got sort of one last focus group. We'll get, you know, when we settle on a date, we'll certainly invite y'all to that if you want to be able to make that. There were supposed to be two or three more that were geographic, geographically oriented, but we just weren't getting too many volunteers, so. And we're getting kind of late for the focus group. They really wanted us to be pretty much done by now. Then we're halfway through, maybe. So there's one, a couple more opportunities, at least for the focus group format. And there's going to be lots of times after that where there'll be meetings and things where anybody can still come and participate. It's just a different format. You'll see the draft plan reviews in the spring and then an open house in the future. So there'll be lots of opportunity to see what went into the plan, whether it was through the focus groups or just the background that the consultant came up with. Again, this is, I'm not sure that we're going to be basing much of this out of the old plan, but ultimately, in the final plan, you're going to see these things, goals and strategies, a future development guide, where we should go. And I would anticipate that you're going to see some direction in that plan. When it's ultimately adopted, it's going to cause work for the Planning Commission. So you'll see things come out of that. And to the degree that you want to help steer that, please participate, if not in the focus group, in the meetings that happen after that. So you'll see, this is ways that the community's been able to participate so far, the community survey, we had over 600 folks, you were able to go through the website for that. Not many people participate in paper, but if you wanted to do the survey by paper, you could have come and done that. You can have the focus groups, and then there are going to be these upcoming notices for the broader public to participate. And certainly, if you've got any ideas, things that you'd like to see in the comp plan, ideas, you can talk to myself, you can talk to our public engagement coordinator, Ashley Ruttlinger, and of course, the consultant themselves can be contacted. They're the ones, staff doesn't have the time to write your new plan, so obviously, we've got a consultant who's doing the heavy lifting on that. So that's the update on the comp plan. We've still got months to go.
All right. Item C, hiring of county planner?
Yes, thank goodness. At the end of December, the new budget was adopted, and there's a new position for help for Doug. So now I just need to find time to write the job description and to get an ad out there. But hopefully, sometime in this calendar year, you'll be introduced to another face, and maybe your minutes will be done on time. you'll be introduced to another face, and maybe your minutes will be done on time, and reports will be done on time, and who knows what new twist this new person can have. But we'll have two planners on staff for the unincorporated area, hopefully, in the next few months. Can't tell you when. It's a matter of just my time to get to it. You've already heard, I've got some ordinances I need to get back to the Board of Commissioners on, and some minutes I need to do. So, but we'll get there, it's going to happen. I was very grateful to the Board of Commissioners for proving that new position, and we're certainly going to use it.
That's great. Item D, HB 1405 modifications?
Yeah, I, there's some material in there. One is a summary from my fellow planners from across Georgia, our professional organization. And then you've got the actual statute that was adopted by the state legislature. It was not adopted this past session, it was actually the session before. These are some changes in terms of notice requirements and things dealing with multifamily. Notice will be extended in certain cases, but the bottom line for me is, I don't even understand it all. So I've certainly notified our county attorney and the county manager that I'm going to need help putting these changes into our ordinance. Most of them are procedural, so you may see some procedural changes. Some of them don't really affect us unless a certain issue comes up. Sometimes it's, well, it's only if the county itself initiates it, not if a private developer. So it's some procedural changes that we've got to get by January 1st into our county ordinances. But I, I've read them through twice, and I'm still not quite sure what they say. And I don't feel too bad. I was at a zoning administrators conference in the last few weeks, and there was a gentleman who was in the room with a couple of different attorneys, and they didn't even agree on what they thought it said. So if the attorneys don't agree, then I don't feel too bad, that I don't quite understand the direction that we need to go in. We do need to have changes in our ordinance.
I have one other question, if I might. Please talk to me about the permit process at the Rock Ranch.
I asked Thomas about that recently, and sometime last year, I don't know if it was September or October, they introduced a slightly changed site plan than what y'all saw. They moved one of the gyms to a different location, and now it's something else. I think it's the boxing gym, it's no longer boxing gym.
It's a theater.
That's it, you're right. They changed it to a theater. But since then, nothing.
So they've only bought one permit?
I think maybe. Did we get the land disturbance? If we got a permit, it might have been the land disturbance permit application, but I'm not even sure that we got that.
I think they're still, they're still in a lot of processing, of getting everything figured out, everything they got to do, you know?
I would basically sum it up by saying, no, there's not a lot of movement since it went through the process of rezoning, or the special exception, I'm sorry, through the special exception.
So I guess they're not going to have all those buildings by the summer?
No, apparently not. But certainly, if I get any news, you know, if we hear any more about permitting, or, I mean, there was a lot of issue and discussion about, you know, having to go through the state for certain things. I'm not quite sure where that is. I think that site plan also, I think it showed like five different septic tanks and drain fields, and that was, you know, around that cluster. So obviously, five drain fields and septic tanks is pretty significant. Is that the best way for them to go? I mean, we don't know yet until we start seeing some real permitting.
That stuff that they got to get worked out with the state.
Yeah, the state's going to do, the EPA's going to do the order.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
All right. So I have a motion for a German.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Thanks, Mr. Doug.
603. Thank you very much.